Good morning, everyone. Everyone's awake now? Sorry about that. Welcome to the Westover Alumni Association Annual Town Meeting and welcome to reunion Before we get started with the official business of the Town Hall meeting, I just want to extend a special thank you to the alumni office. This event every year is powered by their very short staff, or their short-staffed office, rather. And it's a ton, and they're short, yeah. And it's a ton of work that starts almost immediately after this reunion weekend. So if we could just kind of give them a round of applause and give them a hug if you see them this weekend, they probably need one. So I'm going to start off by acknowledging some of our faculty and staff who are leaving us this year. And I'm going to read off the names of a few of those people, and if we could just wait until the end of the list, and we're going to ask them to stand and give them a deserved round of applause. So Rachel Bishewkin, after 35 years at Westover, is leaving us. She's on to bigger and better things. She served as a member of the English faculty for a number of years, as well as academic dean, Jewish student advisor, and day student advisor. For years, Rachel has also served as the school's kind of collective memory, and I'm sure all of you have used her services before I know that I have. She's sort of a calendar whiz. We wish Rachel a great new start as she retires to New Haven. Steven Ladd is also leaving us. He's served the school as business manager for 19 years. He's always been more than a business manager for us, and has served as a softball coach, supporter of all of the sports teams. He also attends plays and many student programs. Steve has always been there to help students and families throughout their years at Westover and is a constant presence on campus. We wish Steve and his wife Kim well as they enjoy more time in Florida and with their grandchildren. Susan Lamphier. Susan will retire after 26 years of service to Westover. Susan started her career as the administrative assistant in the development office and has served three heads of school, Joel Mulder, Ann Paulina, and now Julie. She has meticulously and graciously assisted them with their affairs. Susan's commitment to Westover is a family affair. Husband Craig has coached basketball, and her son Grant is part of the maintenance team and painter extraordinaire. While Susan is being recognized now, her actual retirement is not until the fall. We're fortunate to keep her expertise for a little bit longer. And we have one more person we'd like to recognize, Jackie Simmons, but I don't believe she's here yet, so we'd like to wait until she's arrived to acknowledge her. But in the meantime, if the people that we just mentioned could stand, and let's give them a round of applause for their service. On reunion weekends, I'm always reminded about the importance of power and connection. We live in a world that seems fixated on connections. I have about 1,000 LinkedIn connections, and I think I've met face-to-face with about 40% of those connections. Facebook connections and Instagram likes. People get hired on the number of connections they have based on that number. People buy things based on connections. People date people based on connections, people that they find online who are connected with other people. Connections make us feel like we're part of something bigger. It's a way for us to feel like there are other people out there with similar mindsets, ideals, interests. But how deep do these connections really go, these social media connections and the connections that are sort of imposed upon us now? It's very interesting. The connections seem almost superficial, and I can tell you from online dating that the connections aren't always what they seem to be. I met my husband on eligiblegreeds.com. I was neither eligible nor all-the-way Greek, and he's not even Greek, so I don't know. But here we are today. So where do we turn in this day and age for authentic connection? We in this room, I believe, have a leg up. We have Westover, a school full of women with shared traditions and 100-plus years of institutional knowledge. The inside stories you share with your old roommate, the Canterbury Tales prologue you can still recite from heart, the one that haunts me. These are sort of the connections that matter. So I'm not advising you to shut down your LinkedIn account or to stop online dating, but I'm asking you to consider spending more time cultivating your Westover connections. I have a feeling that these will be the ones that stay active the longest and bear the most fruit over time, and that are the most fulfilling and genuine connections out there. So just kind of keep that in mind as you're reconnecting with your fellow classmates and faculty and staff this weekend. So we're going to get started with sort of the meat of the Town Hall meeting now with the annual fund report from Vicki Vera.
Good morning. I'm excited to be here with you today to announce the progress of the Westover Fund. As of today, we've raised a little over $1 million in gifts and pledges toward our goal of 1.6 million. Terrific results, but there's more to do. As you enjoy your time on campus this weekend, reconnecting with classmates, exploring the campus, and meeting students, I hope that you are inspired to make a Westover Fund gift. Once you donate, you'll get one of these snazzy white ribbons for your name tag. You can also make a gift and enter a raffle for a limited edition print that's in display in Red Hall. Donating is incredibly easy to do. You may use your smartphone and log on to the Westover website and click the giving link on the homepage, or there is a Westover Fund giving box at the registration desk in Red Hall. You can deposit your checks right there, and there are envelopes for you to fill out your credit card information. If you've already given, I ask you to pick up the phone and call a fellow Westover alum and share a story about your time here this weekend and ask her to make a gift as well. Westover is the envy of our peer schools because of our alumni participation. I expect this year to be unparalleled. Now I'll hand it over to Sarah Bliss-Simmons.
Good morning. I'm the secretary of the Board of Governors, and the minutes from the annual meeting of May 2015 are posted on the online portal. They're in the lobby right out here of LBD, and they'll be in Red Hall. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes of the annual meeting of the Alumni Association of May 2015? Do I hear a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Good morning. My name is Lizzy Coffin. I'm from the class of '92. I'm a member of the Board of Governors and the chair of the Governance Committee. This year, the Board of Governors is saying goodbye to six retiring governors. Abby Mason-Brown from the class of '61, Cece Worley-Campbell from the class of '78, Robin Cruz-Mclernan from the class of '83, Ann Clark-Priftis from the class of '96, Izu Emigwali from the class of 2001, and Karima Gotchak from the class of 2003. Please join me in thanking them for their service to Westover as governors. We so greatly appreciate their commitment to the school, to the alumni, and to the school's mission, so thank you all. The Board of Governors has nominated the following alumni to serve as new governors for an initial three-year term ending May 2019. Connie Cliff, class of '56, Neil Patterson-King, class of '88, Suzanne Carpenter-Charbonneau, class of '93, Greta Atchinson, class of '02, and Alyssa Seifert, class of '05. May I have a motion to elect these new governors? Any seconds? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All in favor? The Board of Governors put forth the following two changes to our Board of Governors bylaws. In Article 6, Section 6, the secretary and treasurer offices will be combined. In Article 6, Section 7, the treasurer office will be eliminated. May I have a motion to accept these changes to the Board of Governors bylaws? Any seconds? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All in favor? Okay, and finally, the Board of Governors nominates the following members for offices. President Maura Tansley, class of 2000, Vice President Dory Milner-Peez, class of '57, and Secretary/Treasurer Sarah Bliss-Simmons, class of '79. May I have a motion to elect these members as officers? Any seconds? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All in favor?
Before we officially adjourn the meeting, I just wanted to bring your attention to a couple of things that are going on on campus. If you can take advantage of them this weekend, if you have the time, it would be great. We Are Westover is an initiative to capture all of the alumni's memories on video. So if you go into the common room off of Red Hall, you'll find a setup there where you can give a few minutes feedback about your experience at Westover. You can tell a story, you can share an occurrence that happened while you're here, a memory, quote, whatever you'd like. So I strongly encourage you to take some time to do that this weekend. We're also having a demonstration of Westover Connect this afternoon, alum, and share your stories about employment, internships, et cetera. So I officially adjourn the Town Hall meeting. I'm going to use my gavel for the last time. Yes. There we go. Don't let the power go to your head, Mo. And now I'm going to turn it over to Susan Clark, the president of the Board of Trustees.
Good morning, everyone. As Ann said, I'm Susan Clark, class of '71, the incomparable class of 1971, with a strong presence here today. Unusually, being head of the Board of Trustees, I follow a wonderful head of the Board of Trustees who was also from the class of 1971, which is quite remarkable. Thank you, Francine, for leading us up to this stage. So it is my responsibility, but also my great delight, to introduce you to Julie Faustick, the new head of school. As I was listening to this meeting up until now, what occurred to me was how much change is going on, and yet how constant the Westover community is. And I think that will continue. We have Mo Tansley, a new head of the Board of Governors, me, a new head of the Board of Trustees, Julie, the new head of school, and yet, Westover and the whole community that it is will continue. Julie takes over at a particularly important time for Westover. As you leave this room and go out towards your lunch, you'll see some boards that are up there that explain a little bit of the master plan that we're engaged in right now, which includes a pretty significant renovation of the main building and finally putting a proper space together for the signature program-wise. Do, you know, take some time to take a look at it. It's rough, it's a rendering, and of course, things may change, but we'd like you all to know that there will be some important renovations happening over the next few years. So Julie, you've probably all met her by now, you've probably all heard about her background, but just in case you haven't, Julie joined us from the Walnut Hill School almost a year ago now. And Julie was there for about 19 years, ending up as the assistant head of school. She has a master's from Emerson, she went to Smith. She comes from a family of educators, so it's in her blood. She is a teacher, and I hope that she'll be back in the classroom at some point after she gets her feet totally, totally under the desk here as the head of school. I guess there's not too much else to say, except she does have a dog. I have seen the dog, even though, and loves spending time with Nessa.
Thank you, Susan, and I wanted to just start off by saying a very deep thank you, the debt of gratitude I owe both Francine and Susan. We had a weekly phone call since I got on campus in the middle of July that has been incredibly supportive and sometimes a lifeline, because when you start off, sometimes you don't know all the answers. So I just wanted to thank them both, because they've been incredible supports, and they've been wise, and they've been friends. So thank you, Francine, thank you, Susan, and I look forward to working with Susan in the next few years. So we're going to start off with a video, and my friend Lindsay and I up in the booth are going to be working together here, so we're going to do a little snapshot of the year through a video. And that's about how fast this year went by. Seriously, though, it's been a whirlwind year, but it's also been an incredibly productive year, and I feel very blessed to be at Westover. So I wanted to give you a little snapshot of the year through numbers as well. We have 10 independent senior projects, and these are projects where a girl can really dive deep into one of their passions. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about a few specific examples of these projects in a few minutes. The class of 2016 are matriculating to 40 different of the nation's top colleges and universities. I visited with about 400 alumni across the country, and I was so... I visited with about four hundred alumni across the country, and I was so touched by the warmth of your welcome, and I thank you for that. And we had one national title from our powerhouse squash team, the first national title in the squash program's history.[612.16][612.16][applause] So we can go to the next slide. While we all intuitively know the value of a Westover education, we are always seeking to tangibly demonstrate it, and one powerful way to do so is through our independent senior projects. And this year's projects include these. Julianne Brown conceived the idea of a film festival that showcased the talents of young female filmmakers in order to raise awareness of the under-representation of women in filmmaking and to promote the talent of the young women who will be its future. Alana Workin, class of ninety-three, a producer at MTV, was a guest speaker, and three Westover student filmmakers were among the many entrants. Julianne is going on to study at Dickinson University in the fall, and she's also recruiting someone to take over this film festival, so it will become an annual tradition at Westover. We can go to the next slide. Josie Norris did two projects. One was a complete study of biodiversity of the Westover Pond, which is something that we really, as an institution, needed to do, and she was happy to do it. The other was letterpress prints that featured images of the old senior tree. It's seen here in the stump dump, being cut up by Steve Mastriani in our Facilities Department. And what she did was she took prints of the stumps on the letterpress, and then she combined these with original poetry, and they're quite stunning. So I'm gonna be buying one of those to put in the head's house and display it prominently. Josie's going on to study at the University of Vermont in the fall. And also, she was dying to get her hands on the chainsaw, and we wouldn't let her.[724.85][724.85][laughter] So we can go to the next slide. This is Callie Waskowitz, and I had to show this photo, because I love the fact that this is her favorite place to study, is in a corner of the study hall. And one, I don't know if you can read that, but a fellow student had that nameplate made that says, "Callie Waskowitz, Study Hall Resident."[747.82][747.82][laughter] So cute. What Callie did was she invented a device that helps physical therapy patients move from sitting to standing. And this project was a finalist at the Connecticut State Science Fair. And can we play the video?
Go. Alright, trial number five. I have it attached to a different place on the carabiner, so it should pick me up perfectly this time, and hopefully, if it works okay, I should be able to walk away with it. Let's just try it out, see what happens.
And you can see, once she's up, she's totally supported from underneath. She's currently working towards getting a patent for this device. Callie is going on to study at Worcester Polytechnic Institute in the fall. We can go to the next slide. Rian Ishikawa and Amelia Bell had a dream when they were younger Westover students, and this dream was to put on a fully-produced production of Rent with all the bells and whistles. So Amelia directed, and Rian did both the scenic design and the stage managing, and all the resources of a faculty-produced musical were put towards this production with even professional musicians, and Bob Havery, stage directing, which was pretty awesome to see. We had a cage on this side of stage where all the musicians were, where the main set was on this side, and Bob's in there in the cage playing Rent. It was pretty great. And I will say that the commitment from the kids, because this was a student-driven project, was amazing, and the exuberance that we saw in that performance was really one of the most remarkable things I've ever seen. And I come from an art school, so that's saying something. Rian is going on to the New School next fall, and Amelia is going on to New York University. These projects and many others presented throughout the year clearly illustrate the ambitious goals our girls set for themselves and the support they find at Westover to help achieve those goals. It's truly amazing to see what high school girls can achieve when they have that balance of challenge and nurture that I think Westover provides so well. So we can go to the next slide, which is about our college matriculation list. So before I talk a little bit about the list, I wanted to just tell a story and go off my prepared remarks for a minute. So I had the seniors up in small groups for dessert to Lee House this spring. So one of the groups came, and they were on the kitchen getting their pie, and one girl said, you know, Suzie has some news. And Suzie clearly did not want to share the news, she looked embarrassed. And so then the girl's like, "Come on, come on, share your news." And so she said she'd just gotten into an Ivy League school. And immediately, what I'm thinking is, I know that college admission can be kind of a touchy thing with high school seniors, and I was a little worried that there might be, it might cause some upset, or some other people might feel disappointed about their own situation. But the girls were hugging each other, they were squealing, and one of them said to me, "You know, we all understand, we all have different dreams and goals, and we're just happy when our peers achieve theirs." And I've told this story, and some people don't believe it actually happened, but it did. And I feel like that is part of the magic of Westover, the kindness, the compassion, and the sense of that you're competing with yourself, but you don't have to compete with your peers. It makes it a really special place. Although, the senior class has also assured me that they're the nicest of all the classes. So, we'll see. This year, we began to talk more deliberately about Westover as a place that challenges smart, motivated girls to become confident and connected women, and the connection that actually connects to what Anne was saying earlier. And I think it's really true, the girls talk about how they feel connected to the adults and how they feel connected to each other, and this is something that is really life-changing. For many of our girls, the next step in this journey is college, and the class of two thousand sixteen will continue to think, to do, and to be at some of the best colleges and universities in the world. I am personally very proud to think of the impact our graduates will have as they take their skills and values they learned at Westover out into the world. And you might notice, there's actually, on that list, there's a bunch of single-sex institutions. So our girls sometimes have such a powerful experience here, they wanna go forward with that experience. Thank you, Lindsay. So the Head of School tour. When I joined the community, I heard from many people about Westover's incredibly tight-knit, loyal alumni base. And I will admit, I was a little nervous about going out on this tour, because I thought, you know, who am I? You know, and also, is it gonna be like, "So, what do you got? What do you got? What do you got?"[1074.65][1074.65][laughter] And that was not my experience at all. It has been one of the highlights of the year to go out across the country and meet all of you. It's been inspiring, it's been heartwarming, and I really feel embraced by the Westover community in a way, sometimes I feel like, I just feel very lucky, and I hope I can earn, continue to earn your love and respect throughout the years. I'm so grateful for all you've extended to me and for your continued support of Westover, because your passion for this school, I just hope you know, it's not typical of all schools. Not everyone feels this passionate about their school. Not this many people come back to reunions at schools this size, and not this percentage of alumni support their annual fund the way that you do. And that is always a vote of confidence every time alumni participate in anything at the school. So I feel deeply grateful for being here, and a big part of that is all because of you. So I thank you. And as I ended all of my reception remarks, my only regret this year is that I am not a Westover alum myself.[1136.24][1136.24][laughter] So thank you.[1140.24][1140.24][applause] And it was incredibly exciting for Westover to win its first national squash championship and to be honored as the Class B two thousand sixteen finalists at the New England Championships. But what makes me even more proud is the fact that the Wildcats were selected by the other fifteen teams in the tournament to receive the New England Interscholastic Squash Association Team Sportsmanship Award. I feel like it's very Westover to be fiercely competitive and incredibly nice.[1176.83][1176.83][laughter] And finally, others who know Anne have spoken about her, but I did wanna add my own personal reflection, because one of the reasons I came to Westover was because of Anne, her kindness, her wisdom, and the example she set for inspiring leadership. You know, I knew when I met her for the first time many years ago, that whatever school she ran had to be a very, very special place. And what I have found here is that she has helped Westover be a rare community where warmth and caring, deep personal investment in making the world a better place, and incredibly high standards are all able to coexist together. This community is part of Anne's legacy. I've been grateful to her since the first day I walked on campus, and I will continue to be grateful for her every day since then. So I thank you, and now I think it's time for some awards.[1232.48][1232.48][applause]
Hello again. Oops. The success of the Westover Fund is built on the work of our class agent and reunion-giving volunteers. Each year, we recognize our volunteers who have achieved outstanding success in raising dollars and participation from their classes. And as we call names, if you can please come up and receive your award, that would be great. We'll start with the Julia B. Curlin Award. It's presented to the fundraising volunteers of the reunion class that has achieved the most exceptional results in the support of the Westover Fund. This year, we are pleased to present this award to two outstanding classes, the class of nineteen seventy-one and the class of nineteen ninety-one.[1295.33][1295.33][applause] Please join us in congratulating these outstanding volunteers. From the class of nineteen seventy-one, it's Karen Keorlin Phillips and Nancy Riley-Cavanaugh.[1318.48][1318.48][applause] And from the class of nineteen ninety-one, Alexandra Conway-Marx and Maria Patron.[1349.01][1349.01][applause] And I don't think they're here today with us. The second award is the Adele Urban Award. It's presented to the class agent, or agents, of a non-reunion class with the best results in participation and increase in total giving to the Westover Fund. We are pleased to present this award to the class of nineteen sixty-nine and recognize class agents Elaine Runden and Starr White Snead.[1377.83][1377.83][applause] The Alumni Board of Governors Award is presented to the class from the most recent fifteen years with the highest percentage of participation to the Westover Fund. Our award winner this year is a class of two thousand five with thirty-nine percent class participation. It is my pleasure to recognize class agents Alyssa Seifert and Annie Zheng.[1410.48][1410.48][applause] So congratulations to these outstanding classes and agents, and now I'll hand it over to Tiz Mulligan, Director of Athletics.
We had our fourth retiring faculty-staff person just arrive, so I quickly wanted to recognize her before we move on with the program. So Jackie Simmons has been with Westover since nineteen ninety-eight. She served Westover for eighteen years, coordinating classroom books and school transportation, and she's the mother of two Westover girls, Deena and Dana, class of two thousand and one. So if we could just recognize her with a round of applause. And now we'll continue on with Tiz Mulligan.
Thank you so much for giving me the honor of recognizing two of your very accomplished peers today, and it's very fitting after Julie's remarks about the squash program. Margaret Meg North and Courtney Mulligan-Whitelock, Westover class of two thousand six, are very deserving two thousand sixteen inductees of Westover Schools Athletic Hall of Fame in their first year of eligibility. Their outstanding Westover careers, not only athletically, but as engaged members of the community as students, were far-reaching and impressive. They were a part of a Westover squash program in its infancy and helped create many firsts. At the collegiate level, they continued to pursue their athletic passions, playing squash, and both found themselves with several collegiate accolades. Their successes athletically are excellent examples for future Westover athletes aspiring to play at the next level. At this time, I'd like to ask Liz North-Boucher, class of two thousand and four, to present
In her freshman year at Westover, Meg successfully clinched a position on the varsity soccer and lacrosse teams. However, Meg found that she was truly devoted to squash. Though Meg began on JV squash her freshman year, she was quick to be named MVP and work her way to the number-two on the ladder. Her coach at the time, Sandy Larkin, was prophetic and sang, "In her four years, Meg will witness and be responsible for great accomplishments in Westover squash." Meg joined the varsity squash team her sophomore year, where she maintained the number-one and two ladder positions. As captain, Meg led the team to the US Squash High School Nationals for the first time. There, the team finished fourth out of sixteen in the Class B division, and Meg earned a personal three-two record. By the end of her senior twenty-oh-six season, Meg had earned an overall twenty-one-three competitive record. Most notably, she was Westover Schools' first New England squash champion. Her accomplishments at Westover include four years on the varsity squash and lacrosse teams, three years on the varsity squash team, tri-varsity captain, and the first head of the Athletic Association. Furthermore, in two thousand and six, Meg received the Elizabeth Molten Ritchie Senior Athletic Award, the Carmen Ekman Soccer Award, and the Mug Squash Award. Meg continued her squash career at St. Lawrence University, where she played four years on the varsity squash team, completing her St. Lawrence career as senior captain. She went twelve to seven in her senior season for the Saints. She was awarded the Liberty League's Rookie of the Year as a sophomore and was a three-time All-Liberty League selection. Meg continued her education at Boston University, where she obtained her Masters in Public Health. Following graduation, Meg completed a fellowship with the prestigious Global Health Corps. Currently, Meg resides in Kigali, Rwanda, where she works as the East African Program Officer for the Women's Bakery, a nonprofit organization founded by another Westover alum. Meg continues to improve her squash game with whomever she can find to play during her international travels. Practice includes regular matches with players in Rwanda and across East Africa. Meg is remembered by teammates as approachable, encouraging, and competitive. She maintains integrity and composure on and off the court. Alyssa Seifert, class of oh-five, was very quick to give me a little blurb about Meg. Playing soccer with Meg was simultaneously joyful and inspiring, as she always has a smile on her face and a way to make everyone around her smile. But she also always brought an intensity to practice and games that made us all level up. Meg is an incredibly hard worker and extremely committed to any team lucky enough to have her. She never took shortcuts, even when our exhaustion made it very tempting, and always played hard. As a goalkeeper, I had varying levels of confidence in each player, and I knew that I would always count on Meg on the soccer field and beyond. As Meg's sister, I was overjoyed to have her follow me to Westover and continue in my footsteps as a teammate and as first head of the Athletic Association. Even though she is my younger sister, she has coached me to be a better squash player and a better person, encouraging a motto to those around her, "Life is an adventure, go out and live it." Beyond this award, I would like my sister to know that I'm extremely proud of her in all that she's accomplished and who she has become. Congratulations today, Meg, on your induction into the Westover School Athletic Hall of Fame.[1773.22][1773.22][applause]
It is a huge honor, and I just want to say four quick thank yous. First, thank you to my sister, Liz North-Boucher, Class of '04, for being my athletic mentor and inspiration. Thank you to the Athletic Department for giving me success and failure on the athletic field. And thank you to Westover for making the exercise every day at 3:35.
It is my pleasure to induct Courtney Mulligan-Whitelock into the Westover Hall of Fame. I've known Courtney for more than 14 years, during which time I have seen her in many contexts, most significantly as student, athlete, and leader. Courtney has a way of organizing and taking charge of circumstances both on and off the court. In fact, and I don't know how this happened, somehow, her parents realized that she was going to be very good at a sport that was played on a court, so they gave her the right name, Courtney. Okay, I know it's hokey, but it still works. She's someone whose life in many ways mirrors what she has achieved on the squash court. Courtney has a habit of collecting awards, most of which I don't even have time to mention. It's a long list. But in addition to being an honor student and giving herself in many ways at Westover, she was given the Westover Sportsmanship Award, the Elizabeth Moulton Ritchie Senior Athletic Award, captains' awards in varsity soccer and varsity lacrosse, and multiple CISAIC league awards. Though she didn't even take up squash until she was a sophomore, she finished her career as a significant part of a team that placed in the top 20 in the US Squash High School Nationals. And they were fourth in the New England Tournament her senior year. Courtney impressively played the number-three position on this team. She's had an illustrious career in squash at Franklin &amp; Marshall, where she became captain of the team and is one of the top 20 in all-time wins in that 50-year-old program. Her coach, she just happened to have as her coach the former number-one ranked squash player in the world, John White, referred to her as "mini-me." Now, Courtney's, I mean, she's not six feet tall, her coach is about 6'5", so that's, I think, why he called her "mini-me." And he wrote that she was "a great competitor, captain, and best of all the great, and best of all, a great leader both on and off the court. She never gave up, she hated to lose, and because of this, she outplayed and beat many a stronger opponent." This is what made her a great captain and competitor. She played all four years at Franklin &amp; Marshall, sometimes as their number-one on the ladder. Because she refused to lose, Courtney won almost all matches that went to five games, both at Westover and at Franklin &amp; Marshall. She did lose one match in five, but she had a temperature of over 100 degrees, and that just shows what kind of competitor she was. In college, at the College Squash Association Nationals at Princeton, Courtney was down two games, and then she came back to win the next two, it was best-of-five, so the fifth and deciding game, she was down 8-3, and at that time, nine was the winning score. So she had to win seven straight points, which she did. Her coach was so angry with her because he'd been on a roller coaster, because it was the deciding match of the tournament for them. Franklin &amp; Marshall was able to win because Courtney won that match. When she came off the court, he said, "You had no right to win that match." He was furious with her. Courtney's sister Kendall, Class of '08, will have the last word. Kendall can't be with us today because she is coaching the Franklin &amp; Marshall crew team in a big tournament today. She says, "Courtney, I'm so proud of your induction into the Westover Athletic Hall of Fame. As you well know, you have been someone I looked up to in all facets of life. Your perseverance, determination, and Mighty Mouse attitude has made you a force to be reckoned with, both as an athlete and as a businesswoman." And Courtney's had a strong professional record working at Christie's and now with the New York Department of Transportation. "You should know a great deal, you show a great deal of care and nurturing," her sister writes, "allowing others, just as you did with me, to fall in love with the athletics you are passionate about. I'm sorry I cannot be with you today to celebrate, but know that I am very proud of you and will continue all that you are and continue to accomplish. You still touch the lives of so many around you through squash and professionally, and for that, I look up to you always. Congratulations on this well-deserved moment." So it's my pleasure to give Courtney Mulligan the Westover Hall of Fame Award.
Thank you very much from Westover for this award. I first want to thank my family. We are very competitive, if you haven't noticed. I think every one of my family members has played at some boarding school and some college, and it's a very competitive household to the point where we have to be removed from playing games together in the summer. I want to thank all my teammates at Westover. A lot of you are here. Because of you guys, I became the athlete that I am, and I really appreciate all the memories that I have with all of you. And I'd like to thank my sister, who is not here.
Good morning. I'm Maura Tansley from the Class of 2000, and it's my pleasure to present this year's Distinguished Young Alumni Award to Rebecca Palino-Holtzhauser from the Class of 2001. Becca, if you could come on up? So I'm lucky enough to have known Becca since we were very young, running around on the soccer field, playing travel soccer for the Watertown Youth Soccer League. Yes, and Kelly Agnew. I knew then that Becca was a force to be reckoned with on the field, and certainly, she has not disappointed, and she's been a force to be reckoned with throughout her entire life and career thus far. After Westover, Becca graduated from UConn with a double major in political science and French. While there, she was awarded the Student Life Award for public service. After UConn, she went on to Quinnipiac University Law School, and she's currently a criminal defense attorney with Derrason Associates in Hartford. I'm also a criminal defense attorney. I think it's something to do with the soccer, maybe? When she's not zealously advocating for her clients, Becca serves as a very passionate president for the Board of Directors for My Sister's Place, a Hartford-based nonprofit assisting homeless women and children by providing housing and corresponding services. If any of you are friends with Becca on Facebook, you know that she is regularly organizing formal and well-planned fundraising events, as well as more informal drives as things are needed and requests are made from My Sister's Place. It's very clear to anyone that knows her that this is very important to her. In September 2015, Becca was named the Young Woman of the Month by Young Women Rising, a project of the Connecticut Permanent Commission on the Status of Women. While being interviewed for that award, Becca credited Westover for nurturing her inner-feminist at a young age. Becca believes in the girl effect, the amazing impact that women have on whatever they put their energy into. She's a feminist because she believes in the strength, capacity, and heart of her fellow-womenkind. Becca, today, the entire alumni body honors your strength, your capacity, and your heart.
Wow, I am so honored, and I would like to thank the faculty and staff. Welcome, Julie, Board of Trustees, Board of Governors, Alumni Association, and friends. This is a tremendous honor for me, and it is just so incredible to be back here for my 15th reunion. And being selected for this award is truly humbling, and I'm so grateful, because I cannot imagine receiving an award from a more meaningful place than from Westover School. Westover is just so much more than a school. It's home, it's community, and for me, it's the foundation from which I've built my life. And what is also very poignant to me this year is that it's my 15th, and the year I started at Westover was Ann Polina's first year as head of school. So that special link to Ann inspires me, and to make her proud, and I know that all of us here will continue to honor the school on our respective journeys through life. So I just want to thank you all so much, and I'm truly grateful.
Hi, I'm Sue Tracy Addis, Class of 1947, and I have the wonderful honor of awarding the Mariah Randall Allen Volunteer Award to, sorry, I'm having allergy problems, to Abby Brown, Class of 61. While I don't think any Westover alumni can be described in one word, if I had to choose one for Abby, it would be ambassador. Ambassador for the school, ambassador for the alumni, ambassador for the school to the world. Abby is completing her sixth year on the Board of Governors and will be cycling off this month, and the remaining governors are certainly going to miss her greatly. During those six years, Abby chaired the Governance Committee of the Board of Governors and served on the Alumni Weekend Committee, and also while doing that chaired her class's 50th reunion. Before coming to the Board of Governors, Abby served on the Board of Trustees for another six years. If you're adding up, that's already 12. While there, she headed the committee responsible for overseeing the renovation and transformation of the Louise B. Dillingham Student Activity Center into the LBD Performing Arts Center, where you are now sitting. On top of all this, Abby has served as class agent, class secretary, reunion class for 61's 45th reunion, and reunion gift chair for its 40th and 45th reunions. During Westover Centennial, Abby was on the Boston Track the Lantern Committee. She keeps people in Boston connected with each other and with the school. But beyond these official sounding titles and the massive volunteer time they represent, for those of us fortunate enough to have served on the Board of Governors with her, Abby has been a wise counselor, negotiator of agreement among differing positions, and the beacon of Westover spirit for us all. I am very proud to give the Mariah Randall Allen Award to Abby Brown.
I'm not sure I'll even need that. I was told to keep quiet, because I have a reputation for saying more than I probably should, but I cannot not say something. This is the most honor I've ever had. Westover, the three years I spent at Westover were, and this is no lie, the happiest three years of my youth. And it made me, whatever little bit I was, and I have been trying to figure out, so how did I get into volunteering? And both my mother and my aunt were volunteers. My mother raised tons of money for the Republican Party, and my aunt, who won the Westover Award, gave lots of time and energy to Radcliffe College. And they were, without doubt, mentors and examples. And then I figured out, tried to figure out, so where did they start volunteering? I mean, it goes back. And I realized, they went to Westover. Anyone in this room who came to Westover learned to volunteer here. Remember doing all those things in Dorcas? Spending hours there? And I remember being a docet at the Waterbury Museum. We all learned here. This was the thing we did, we gave back. Which is why, because I love this school so much, and because I have become really a professional volunteer outside of Westover as well, it is such an honor and such a wonderful gift to be getting this from Susan, who I have admired ever since I'd met her. Anyway, thank you all very much. I'm sorry, I can't let this go. As you noticed, I hurt myself, and I would not be here today, which would have crushed me, if my husband Al and my daughter Priscilla had not gotten behind me and said, "I don't care how badly you hurt, this means too much to you, get in the car and get there."
It's really loud. Okay. Good morning. I am Kawila Worley Campbell, Class of 1978. As the Chair of the Awards Committee, it is my honor to present the 2016 Westover Award to Jennifer Robbins Manicharian, Class of 1956. The Westover Award is the highest honor Westover bestows. This award is presented annually to a person whose accomplishments are significant and who in life and spirit has exemplified the Westover motto, "To think, to do, to be." Westover's founder, Ms. Hillard, stated in her mission for the school, "Westover is dedicated to challenging and encouraging young women to think both intellectually and spiritually, to do responsibly and with a sense of commitment to community, and to be with energy, self-reliance, and thoughtfulness." As a young wife and mother of four children under the age of seven, Jennifer spent several years trying to figure out how to integrate a career with raising a family, while she certainly figured it out. She finished college, had her fifth child, worked part-time in public relations, and got a master's degree in counseling. She went on to do her clinical training in family therapy and divorce mediation, started a private practice, and joined the faculty of a training institute in family therapy. She was the Director of Divorce Mediation at the Family Institute of Westchester until 1986. At that point, Jennifer courageously left one successful career to forge a new path and second very successful career as a theater producer, which and second very successful career as a theater producer, which has earned her myriad Drama Desk and Tony Awards. In addition, Jennifer serves on the Board of Directors at New York Stage and Film, which is dedicated to both emerging and established artists in the development and production of new works for theater and film. She also serves as a member of the Board of Trustees at the Council for Unity, an organization dedicated to social justice. Jennifer? We applaud your determination, persistence, purposefulness, and achievements as an inspiration to all young women, and we honor you for exemplifying the Westover motto, cogitare, agere esse.
I thank, I thank everybody for this award. I think my speech was just said by, so I'm not sure what I have left to say. I arrived here 63 years ago, a very immature, underachieving student, and I had very little sense of any potential, I don't think anybody else did either. And three years later, through teachers who nurtured me and made me think maybe there was something I had, and through courses that inspired me, I was transformed into an involved, good student, and however, I have to say, however, somebody had just mentioned their inter-feminist. My inter-feminist then became latent, because while I left with a kind of, I loved being here, it was a wonderful three, very formative years for me, but at the time that I graduated, in those days before the women's movement, college was more or less a placeholder for marriage. And I dropped out of college very early, I went to Barnard, I dropped out, I got married, I, most of what I did is already been said. But I think I'm going to fast forward to what happened when I did make my career change, because I went, what happened is that, in those days, when we, those of us who are kind of what we called recycled housewives, it was a very difficult time of transition, which many of you may have experienced yourselves, but once you kind of made that inner transformation, you just can't go back. In any event, I wanted, I'll say a little bit about my career as a producer, with a little background. I had a very conventional childhood in New Canaan, and my father was a lawyer, but he had, one of his law associates was head of a producing organization in those days that produced all the great Rodgers and Hammerstein musicals. So my parents had, while they had their very kind of conventional country club life, they had this other life that involved going to openings, and they had friends who were movie stars, and I was very impressed by it all. And I always, I never kind of imagined how that would fit into my life, but it did leave an impression on me. I was kind of starstruck at a very early age. But having married and had a whole bunch of children, it was, it was no real fit into my life. However, at one point in my life, after I had been a therapist and a mediator for a period of years, an opportunity had come to me, because in the past, but prior to that, I had been investing in little shows through the son of my father's partner, and I would go to openings, and it was all fun, but I was just a very, when I say bit player, I mean $250. I wasn't much of an angel. But somebody brought me an opportunity to co-produce a play that was written by the author of Agnes of God, and it would just happen to be at a transition point in my life, and I decided, well, the hell with it, I'm going to take the leap. And I did. And I really walked away from my previous career, because when I made that commitment, I figured I'm going to, I'm going to do what I can to make it happen. And so it was a real trial by fire. The show opened and closed within a week, but by then, I was hooked. So at that point, I decided, once, once, once you're known in the theater business of somebody who is, and can raise money or puts money into shows, they find you, believe me. They find you. So other shows were offered to me, and over the years, I've been involved in about 30 or so productions on and off Broadway, including one in London. But most people don't know what a producer does, so I'm going to kind of boil it down to its real oversimplification. The lead producer on a show finds a property and is the driving force behind all the decisions to mount a show and manage its future. And usually in a show, there's at most four lead producers. But if any of you go to theater in Broadway, no, usually you see a lot of names above title. Those are the, what I'll call the co-producers, but there's a vast army of people who are needed to help raise the money. You raise money, but you have a voice but not a vote. Now I've been lead producer off-Broadway, and I'm currently lead producer and co-conceiver of a dance musical that, if we're very lucky, will wind up in Broadway, but it's been seven years in the making, and the future is still not totally clear. In the meantime, it's a very high-risk business. As the saying goes, you can make a killing but not a living, and about one in four or five shows fail, and the factors influencing it are somewhat arbitrary. So no matter how much you may know about the business, about budgets, profit potentials and so forth, unless you have Hugh Jackman as your star, you have no idea how it will fare. My most show, successful show financially, was Stomp, which was a real anomaly, very rarely happens. I'm sorry, I've lost my place. But for the most part, the shows that I've been involved in, some of them have been nominated or have won Tonys and run for a long time but don't always recoup. Others have closed quickly. It takes a toll, financially and emotionally, but most people in the theater are aware of the odds, and they've drunk the Kool-Aid, and I'm one of them. But at heart, really, I'm a writer. In my therapist mediator days, I wrote for professional journals, and in the 90s, I wrote a movie with my son, John, who's here, and I produced it, it was distributed all around the world on television, but we didn't have theatrical distribution. But I'm writing screenplays again, because I find that I have a need to be creative, which isn't always satisfied with producing. I wrote the book of a musical that's had a couple of small productions, a couple of you have seen it. It was an amazing experience, but it was both thrilling to be part of a creative effort, and it was also terrifying, feeling judged. And I'm also in a short story writing group, and I've just been asked to teach an adult ed screenwriting course, which I think I'm going to do. In any event, you could probably say the old saying, "I've had it all," you could say "I've had it all," but that saying kind of bothers me, because it implies that it's easy to be a working mother, which it isn't. It involves balancing of shifting priorities and needs, often one at the expense of the other. And if you work by choice, as I do, it's also laden with conflict and guilt, and it also requires the village. But I'm not complaining, I've had my share of trials, but I've had an amazing ride. On the home front, I've been married for 57 years, and we still live in the house where we've raised our children. Sundays are for family, which now includes 13 grandchildren, ages nine to 26, plus two dogs, three dogs and two cats. Professionally, I'm not quite sure what lies ahead, but I've been multitasking since I was about 20, and I'm not very good at slowing down. So as long as my heart is still ticking, I'm planning to stay in the game. Stay tuned. Thank you.
Only a few more minutes until we can eat again, so. No, all Westover women are focused on that. So now it's time to officially pass the gavel to the new Alumni Association President, Maura Tansley.
I just want to take a moment to thank Anne for her service as president. She has propelled the Board of Governors forward, and with that, the entire alumni body. There is such energy and enthusiasm and professionalism and excitement on the entire board, and I look forward to continuing your work. You have big footsteps to fill, but also fabulous shoes.
I'm just going to wrap this up with a quick thought about Anne Polina. Like all Westover women, I love a good quote, but I really had to search far and wide to find one that applied to Anne's legacy and to what Anne meant to me. And I found one from Dolly Parton. It's good, I promise. "If your actions create a legacy that inspires others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, then you are an excellent leader." It almost sounds like Dolly went to Westover, doesn't it? So long after you leave Middlebury this weekend, don't forget our objective as Anne's legacy, to keep dreaming, keep learning, keep doing. That's what Anne would have wanted, for you, for the school, for all of us. So without further ado, go enjoy the weekend, and lunch is being served on the lawn at FAC. Thank you.